Welcome to the April 3, 2014 meeting for the Dixon County Commission. And first item we have is that if you'd please stand and join in flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item we have would be that of the approval of the agenda. And I believe it's just as written, there's no additions. And so I'd go ahead and move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is that of the consent agenda. These are the minutes of March 27th work session and the regular meeting. There's also the abatements of $399.88. Wire payments, $8,259.40.
I move we approve of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for the approval of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go ahead and go with our Commissioner comments. And Laverne will let you lead off better here this time.
Well, we had a couple of things this week that we've attended. Monday night, of course, was the township meeting night that we had with the township people. And we had some very interesting breakout sessions. And seemed like all the township representatives really appreciated the back and forth that they could get at those breakout sessions. And then yesterday Craig and I went up to the North Central Highway meeting up at Belleville. And anyway Brad got elected to do position as Secretary of that organization. All right, Secretary of Treasury again. And of course KDOT brought us up to date on a lot of the construction that they will be doing next year over the state and a lot of regulations. And also Norman Bowers always has a good presentation on just general things that he's kind of the expert road guy. And he's had a lot of past history on things. And it's really always interesting to hear his presentation.
Okay, thank you. Craig?
I'll also talk about the KAC meeting yesterday. Randall, that's the last thing now.
Alan?
Alan was there from KAC. I was gonna bring up work session, but I'm gonna do it now too. I think that as commissioners, we probably get a hold of our representative and Senator, the mortgage registration fee bill that's going through has been so diluted. And they can go now, they can go with the conference committee, doesn't even have to be brought up in the House. There can be no, I should say that there probably won't be any discussion in the House on how the vote's gonna be. And they've changed that rule, I guess, several years ago. You remember that's the way it was, Brad? Brad, Laverne?
I think they changed the procedures.
Procedure and stuff, so they can go with, so there won't be any transparency. It'd be my deal on it. And I know that the legislature is, says it'll be a wash for the money we get, but Mr. Allen presented yesterday that we don't know what's gonna happen in five years with the way things are being. So it's gonna impact our budget to about $210,000, $20,000 a year. And it's more to the registration fee. So it's been in the law since 1925, so there's no big, you know, hike coming up in December to change it. But I think as a commission, we need to get our representatives and, you know, stop and take back and look at it. If it can't be important enough that we had to rush through it to not be transparent. Didn't enjoy the KDOT meeting yesterday. I also attended the North Central Regional Planning Commission in Beloit last Thursday after we got done here. Talked about some of the same things, voter registration, the legislature and stuff. We did one executive session for personnel issues, the net salary and stuff. Anything else? And did the township meeting we had last night? And I didn't want, I told Jerry Lovett, he's an officer from Fragrant Hill, there was some debris dumped up on Chattercrack from some concrete and stuff. And he wanted to let me know that Brandon Hurst, Hertz, was really impressed with him. The work he did, they had one of the deputies and wanted me to make sure I gave him recognition. And that's all I have, Lynn.
Okay. And that meeting with the township, that was something that's very helpful and informative. And we had a good turnout as far as the township people are concerned. And so it was good to have that communication lines, you know, active. And I thought that's, Brad, I know you did a lot of work in preparation on that, so I really appreciate all you did getting that lined up. I did attend the Military Affairs Council breakfast last Thursday, and Colonel Clark gave an overview of some of the things that the Flint Hills Regional Council is doing. Also last Thursday, Central Kansas Mental Health had a meeting at the Eisenhower Courtyard Library. And that had a good attendance and discussion that took place. And then I did receive notification, the Central Kansas Mental Health, they're having their 50th anniversary. Sheila Biggs is gonna be the new president of that group. But they had a kind of a little lobbying effort on our behalf. We're gonna have the meeting at the Eisenhower Courtyard on May 21st. And so we'll be the host of, not only for Dixon and Sling, but some of the area counties that are participants in that. So anyway, that's all I have on Commissioner reports or comments.
I might mention to, we'll be meeting on Monday, canceling the votes for the election.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what time is?
Nine o'clock here.
Nine o'clock, yeah.
Okay. We're gonna move on, and we have three proclamations. And the first one we have is the proclamation declaring April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And so I guess if you'd please step up for some comments and to read that. And then also when we sign this, you can come up here for a photo opportunity.
My name's Maile Olivier. I am a sexual assault advocate with DIBAC in Salina. And I am here to read the 2014 Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls the attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every community member of Dickinson County. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community, and statistics show one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, and youth ages 12 to 17 were 2.5 times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas with leadership and dedication, we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in Dickinson County by increasing education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas Dickinson County strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to prevent sexual violence. It's time for us all to take appropriate action and support one another to create a safer environment for all. Now therefore be resolved that Dickinson County Commission join advocates in communities across the country in playing an active role to prevent sexual violence, along with the United States government and the state of Kansas. I hereby hereby proclaim, excuse me, April has sexual assault awareness.
Okay, thank you. And now is DIBAC, also do you receive funding from like United Way here?
Yes.
And I know in the past, and maybe some of this is confidential where you can't speak specifically, but there's people here in Dixon County that also participate as far as like the safe houses or people to call or?
Right. Our office, yeah, our office is Sling County, Dickinson County, Elswood County, and all the way up to Nebraska border. So we have 10 counties. So Dickinson County is fully covered by the Salina office. We have a satellite office in Concordia, and the advocates there deal primarily with the smaller rural counties. So, and then Sling, the advocates in Sling County, we primarily do Elswood, Dickinson, and Sling County. So we come here and do a lot of stuff with the schools here. Dickinson County has been hugely supportive of our teen dating violence program, so we really appreciate that. It's been amazing, so.
And you kind of coordinate things through law enforcement, or how do people get a hold of you on this?
Law enforcement, yeah. Usually it's through law enforcement. That's primarily, or they'll self-contact us themselves. And then we go from there, making a safety plan and what steps need to be taken for each individual client, so.
Well, thank you so much for your work. And would you wanna come up for the photo opportunity? And then I'll go ahead and give you the proclamation. Do they have both of these, or do we keep one for record?
I made two for them. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you can give down, Lynn.
I'll vote on that.
Yes.
I'll get mine, so I'll get yours too.
I'll move that we declare April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Second.
Okay, so we do have the motion and the second that we do proclaim April's a Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And we have read this proclamation, and like I said, we appreciate the work you do.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess you're important.
We sure are.
We did vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next one we have is for, on the Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we have what, two of you here for that? And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then if one or both of you would want to make some comments, and we'll go ahead and proceed. Whereas children are key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life. And while children are our most valuable resource, they are also our most vulnerable. And whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all. And we are, as a community, extending a helping hand to children and families in need. And whereas by providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Therefore, I, Commissioner Lynn Peterson, on behalf of the Dixon County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2014 as a Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I guess we'll need a motion for approval on this too.
I'd like to declare the month of April as Child Prevention Month.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second to declare this as the Child Abuse Prevention Month. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And if you'd wanna come up for the photo part of it, or also maybe to introduce yourselves and?
Make some comments.
Make some comments.
I'm Janet Fink, and I know a couple of you. I'm a CASA volunteer in Dickinson County. And I put in a little plug that we do need more volunteers in the county, because at any one point in time, there's approximately 60 children in foster care or other placement in our county. And right now, we just have a couple volunteers, so, anyway.
And my name's Lydne Suber. We, you know, we're grant-funded, and United Way does help us in some things. And we just recently, I, myself, and another volunteer, we were putting 40 hours in. We just recently got hired, because we have so many children that are coming into care that, you know, we gotta manage all these volunteers that come in. And unfortunately, haven't been able to take more cases, because we need to spread the word of how many volunteers we need. So right now, we're serving about a little over 74 children. And that's just, you know, our goal is to have a CASA volunteer for each child that comes in. Because, you know, they come in from military, they're just civilians, I mean, they come from all walks of life, different types of neglect. And it's important to let them know what we do, so we can teach child out as much as we can.
Now, if they come in for volunteers, they get a hold of you, but also is there a procedural type training part you go through, or?
Yes, there's approximately, at the beginning, you of course go through a background check. There's about 30 hours of classroom training, as well as some other meeting, training. Of course, you don't ever really feel prepared, you kind of learn as you go. But I think right now, we're serving 11 children in Dickinson County, out of the maybe 60 that are in foster care. So in fact, actually in Dickinson County, there's just myself and another volunteer. So we're, the children that are being served are being served by people from Erie County.
Yeah, because we serve Marion, Dickinson, and Morris County, and Erie.
Morris, yeah.
So it's tied in with the 8th Judicial District?
Right. It's 8th Judicial District.
And yeah, like she said, we have some people that live in Junction City that are taking cases from here, because they need them. So some people are willing to do that. Just, so wherever you wanna live and help, we're more than glad to take it.
Well, thank you for your work and being here today. And Janet, thank you as a volunteer.
Tell her I'm gonna call her.
Okay, well, I think one time.
I just thought, okay, add Paula to my list.
I think one time she had actually inquired on that, and they were, in a turnover time, they didn't have any training opportunities available, and so I think it kind of.
And we're trying to come up with, myself and Natasha, the volunteer coordinator, we're trying to come up with online training for those that don't have the time, so we can teach the classes online for them.
Oh.
We might have to still do like one class, you know, face-to-face, but we're trying to make it more flexible, so we can, you know, for those that work full-time, they can get the training and then help us out.
Okay, well, if you'd come up for the presentation here and the photo. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to tell her how I mention their names.
But you know what, when I was sitting there, I thought.
Oh.
I'm very proud of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So if you guys wanna volunteer, then we'll put the call in.
We'll volunteer shop, it's no worse. This, we have one more proclamation, and I don't believe anyone's here on their behalf, but I'll go ahead and read that. And this is celebrating 46 years of fair housing for the county of Dickinson, whereas the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which Title VIII declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing and opportunity. Whereas the county of Dixon is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And today, many realty companies and associations support fair housing laws. And whereas the fair housing groups, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have, over the years, received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination, and found too many that have been proved upon investigation to be violations of the fair housing laws. And whereas equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our county that can and should be achieved, I, Lynn Peterson, County Commissioner of Dixon County, on behalf of its citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month, and express the hope that this year's observance will promote fair housing practices throughout the county, dated this third day of April 2014. And is there a motion for approval of the proclamation?
So move.
I'll second it.
We have the approval, or we have the motion and the second for approval of the proclamation for fair housing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Lynn Barber will go ahead and?
Thank you for going.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for stopping by. So go ahead and have those forwarded to that group. Okay, the next item we'll go to is our weekly report. And yes, I need to pass those down, we did have these. We'll go ahead and, Brad, if you'll give us your report at this time.
Sure, well, it'll be quick today, so. Been a busy week, been out of the office most of the week, as you know, so. We've already talked a little bit about the report, and I gave you the report on township meeting with the evaluation information. I think this is probably in eight years that I've been involved in, probably the most positive report we've got. And I think we had an excellent meeting, and it appeared that everybody, we had really no derogatory comments, which is, you know, there's always some seem to like, but other than a couple of comments on the meal, like they suggested some changes. It appeared everybody liked breakout sessions, and I think we'll just kind of work on that next year and capitalize and move forward, and make it better from there, so. Very good meeting. We did have a meeting Tuesday afternoon with our contracted witness from Colorado, John and Mark. Got to go out with him and put eyes on the earth's surfaces, and we spent several hours with him, and he's preparing a report for us. So that's, we're continuing to work on that, preparation for the arbitration. The Sheriff's Department reported they've got a couple expeditions going on, and one from Colorado, one from Oklahoma, on the amounts. Just a reminder that next Wednesday is our trip to Otter Bay County for the tour and meeting with them to talk about how they, from the ground up, how they worked on their Justice Center and project for the last several years.
I will, I'll just come here rather than try and pick me up anyplace.
Okay.
If we stop and give, it's gonna take five, 10 minutes to get off, so I'll just come to Abilene.
We'll leave here about 7:30, I think, and we'll be over there in time. And Gareth and Jim Swisher are going with us as well, so.
Yeah, I'll be anxious. See, I've seen it during the construction phase.
Be interesting to see.
I'm anxious to see the complete construction on that.
We talked a little bit this morning already about the county commissioner conference coming up in Manhattan in May, and so we'll get those RFPs made. I also provide you a report on the intangibles levies across the state, and how we compare on average, as we're, it relates to mill levies. And it's kind of noteworthy that, on an average across the board, the last three years, biggest counties lower than the state average by about three mills, and lower than most of the counties around us. So it tells me that we've been very frugal with our budget, and haven't been overexorbitantly out of line as far as increases, so.
And that does include townships and school districts also, and cities.
Yeah, that's total mill levy average.
Fire districts and?
Everything, really, people pay taxes.
So it's cooperative effort of all those entities.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Also give you the first quarter, well, it's first quarter staffing reports. And the one noted difference there is, of course, is the person that, the addition to the roof and bridge department that you added in this year's budget. We were able to get that person hired, getting one staff, working out well, so. Then the last thing is the K-CAM loss reports for the last four years. Every year, K-CAM provides us a report of the loss history. And knock on wood, I'm glad to say that our losses have been minimal. And you look at a graph, and I don't believe there's one under, but the last couple of years, they've been down significantly, and that's a good thing, so. The major losses we've had in the last couple of years have been heal, and damages that of another nature that are not necessarily in our control, so.
And they actually don't, they don't count those things against us, as far as, as their loss ratio?
And then the only other thing, I just, it wasn't on my list, but I know that during Martin and John's report, that Martin had informed me that the total snow removal for the 2013 slash 14 winter, assuming that the winter's over at this point, that's kind of a jump, I guess, but it is right at $110,000 for the counties, what was done on snow removal last several months. And that sounds like a lot of money, but actually that's pretty sure they've gone just a little bit, so. And we're back stocked up on salt, so we're ready for next year, or anything else comes, I guess, between now and summer, so. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. And I don't believe there's any other comments that anyone else would have. We move on to consideration of resolutions. And we do have a resolution.
Communications.
Oh, we do have communications.
Yeah.
I'm glad, you're kind of the veteran.
Oh.
Yeah, but in grade, I just thought, you know, we're moving really fast.
Yeah, well, I tried doing that a few times, and they made me back in.
Is that, or?
Yes.
Okay. I do wanna make mention of some of the things we've received in the mail. And we did have a letter from the city of Abilene, it's from the city manager, David Dildar. And he had just mentioned that in last year, they sent out letters to the top 50 business water customers encouraging water conservation. And of course, by the very virtual size of Dixon County, I mean, we would be up there, because we're one of the larger buildings and employers and so on. But anyway, he wanted to point out that prior to this, Abilene had used a combined 83.4 million gallons of water in 2012. And the number was reduced to 72.8 million gallons. And so there was, conservation efforts contributed to a 13% reduction. And so he was just thanking us for, you know, taking time to go ahead and make a deliberate effort, not only the awareness part of it, but an effort to reduce water usage. Did the train ever drown you out at meetings, or is this kind of a new thing?
No, it seems like their schedule is kind of on our schedule.
Especially when the retired trainman was here, it seemed like it always got, got him, so.
Well, at least it wasn't during the proclamation reading, so.
Well, he enjoyed hearing it, because he said, "That's my retirement, not mine."
Their retirement.
Yeah.
Okay, we have another notification, and this is from KDHE, the state of Kansas. And it's a public notice regarding the proposed Kansas water pollution control permits related to the ag and related waste. And so we'll go ahead and have this posted. And of course, they send this out across the state. And the one that is here in Dickinson County is why we received this. And it's in regards to a permit being reissued for an existing facility in maximum capacity of 460 head of cattle, 700 pounds or less. There's no change in the permitted animal units, and this is for Tom S. Keltonson. I probably mispronounced that. But it's down 777 Union Road in Harrington, Kansas. And I believe that was the only one for Dickinson County on here. And so we'll have that posted. We also received our newspaper from NACO, which is the National Association of County News. And so it has a little bit of what's going on at a national level. And I believe those would be the only, and here's two more that might have been, yeah, this is from last week, so. Okay, now we can go to the resolution declaring two mowing tractors as surplus. And Brad, do you have any comment on that beyond?
No, we, as you remember, we signed an agreement, or printed agreements, a couple weeks ago for Concordia tractor to lease the mowing tractors for the upcoming mowing season, which is actually a much cheaper venture than owning the tractors and maintaining them. And these are two of the three tractors that we own that were used for mowing, that we no longer have a need for, and we feel like it would be economically smart to auction those off at this point, so. There's also for, we also recently updated the security system, camera system here and for the outside cameras that were functional, although weren't functional as well as to the new system.
Needed update.
We've also got those on, right? I think it'll be worthwhile to put those on as well, so.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we do approve resolution number 040314.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? We have the motion and the second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The other item we have now, moving on to unfinished business, and this is to consider the approval of the Taplin subdivision in Grant Township, and Dustin was here a little bit earlier, just to kind of review and answer any questions we had, and Brad, would you want to give a brief overview?
That's a subdivision, a family, a family request on a subdivision that was, or a plat that was, property was purchased and divided, it's a good family, and this for residential use, it's been before the planning commission with a public hearing, and was unanimously approved by them after their diligent work, and Dustin has indicated that there were no issues that came up at all on it, so.
And the way he described it was that the Taplins had purchased a small acreage just to the east of where they were already, the, the Taplin Dog Farm and, and that property area, and then they're divided in two, so potentially there could be two houses that each of the brothers would put on there.
Yes, I think that's obviously one of the things that we've talked about on many occasions throughout the years, what we can do to try to keep our youth, send them off to school and then bring them back to Dickinson County to live and raise their kids and support us, and maybe this is a positive thing towards that.
And procedurally, I mean, this involves, like you said, the planning commission has, has reviewed it and passed it, and they have a land surveyor that has signed off on it, and, as well as the developers or the property owners, so, we'll need to go ahead and do this next step and approve it at our level.
I move that we approve the Taplin subdivision in Grant Township.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion and second for approval of the Taplin addition in Grant Township. Any further discussion or comments? And one thing I might add is, when Dustin was here, that he did say that there was opportunity for public comment, and there were no objections expressed, and also the fact that there is opportunity that if someone ever has a comment on this property or another at that time, they could have sent written comment to him or the county or the, the planning commission, so. Okay, we, we have the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
You'll have to sign that, Lynn, and what you do is cover it then with a piece of, like that, so it doesn't smudge.
Yeah, they have the, the special blue pen here, so.
Like I said, then you need to.
Yeah, I'll actually hand that down, and I'll go ahead and do that. I'll do that right after the meeting, after we can just move on. The other item we have, other business, is review and consider bids for the new dump trucks. Brad, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, we've got, we've got in the budget and the timeframe to replace two of our dump trucks, existing dump trucks, that, dump trucks slash snow plows and salt spreaders that we have, takes about seven to ten months roughly, depending on the workload, to get those, but from the time you order them to get them delivered, at this point, the earliest we can get them would be January of 2015, and so if we wait much longer, we won't get them until middle of the year, but we have solicited bids, we've received four bids, for, of trucks matching the specs, that also include, the bids are basically two-part, but they're cost of the chassis, and then with the bed and the salt spreader, and snow plow combinations attached, and ready to go. The first bid that we got is from MHC Kenworth of Salina, which is actually the low bid, and that's a hundred and fifty-three thousand, one forty-five each, that includes the chassis and the, the rest of the items as specified. The second bid is a hundred and fifty-three, five fifty-five, and that comes to us from Kansas Truck Center in Salina. And then the third bid is one sixty-two, nine, one-nine, which comes to us from the Kansas Truck Center also in Salina, it's for a different model or chassis of a truck. And then Western Star out of Salina as well, bid the Western Star truck at one seventy-five, four ninety-two. As I said, all four of them met the specs. The Kenworth truck from MHC Kenworth is the one that Martin would like to have, and actually have this to be the little bid in for, it would match two of the other Kenworths we had, that we've had really good luck with, so it was, it's our recommendation that we, we approved to order two of those trucks with a delivery being in January 2015. Janelle has solicited from our four local banks that do lease purchasing, what the rate would be for that purchase, as of today is all they can tell us, but they can estimate it, right now, the low, the two low prices were UMB and First Bank at two-point-nine, two-point-five percent. Again, that's an estimate, what they think it will be, may vary a little bit by the time we get to January, but UMB, First Bank, Pinnacle, and Aster are all four willing to do a lease with us if we, when we get to that point, so.
What was the breakout on the tax costs on those things, Brad? I mean, just the high alone?
The truck chassis itself on the Kenworth is ninety-nine, nine ninety-five, of course, the remainder, which is fifty-three, one fifty, is for the bed, the sander, plow installed. On the truck itself from Kansas Truck, the second one was ninety-nine, one ninety-one for the chassis, was remaining amount being the extra. The chassis on the third one is one oh-five, five fifty-five, and the chassis alone on the fourth one is one fifteen, oh two-eight, so.
I move we take the bids for the new dump trucks from the low bidder, which was, I wrote down, I can't remember.
MHC Kenworth.
Yeah, for a hundred and fifty-three.
One forty-five.
One forty-five.
And that, would, they would install the, the plate on the thing?
It's installed and delivered, ready to go into service, yeah.
If you'd want to be ready to let her go when they come in, 'cause you may have snow, so don't come with me.
It might be, yeah, might be needed at that time.
At that time of year, maybe, be a good idea to have it ready to go.
Yeah.
So do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have the motion for the Kenworth truck, they were the low bid, it's a hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars, and we have the second on that, and so, any further discussion or questions?
That is for two.
That's for two, yeah, at that price, so.
Times two.
Two times that, yeah. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There a motion for adjournment?
So move.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and second for adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.